Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody would stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Not sure who's gonna do roll call. I'll do the roll call. Libby? Are you here?
Can't hear you.
I'm here. Took me a second to unmute.
There you go. Brian?
Here.
Becky? Fritz?
Here.
I'm here. We have a quorum. We need to get approval for the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New business. We have Carol Stevens here from the Hancock County Business and Professional Women's Club. We will make a proclamation for Indiana Women's, Working Women's Recognition Month. Hi, how are you?
Thank you very much. My name is Carol Stevens. These ladies here are artists. Is the month that we celebrate as, as of the day and throughout the state. They hope that working women are so it can be and they need to be recognized.
And. You guys want to, can you hear, you want to get over to the microphone? That'd probably be better. So it will be on, people on Zoom can hear you. Sorry about that.
Thanks for the phone.
Yeah. One second. I don't think it's on. Is it on? Technical, technical, sorry. Got a greeting? All right. Hopefully you'll be able to hear me now. Working women are so amazing and need to be recognized. They bring businesses and professions to our community that help our town to grow and prosper. Out of their imaginations and talents come new and exciting ideas and efforts, oftentimes while being responsible for families at home. A few weeks ago, our Business and Professional Women's Organization asked for nominations from the community for an outstanding working woman from, that they wanted to nominate. That was based on qualities such as passion, generosity, commitment, optimism, dedication, and supportiveness. Out of those nominations, one woman has stood out to our organization and has been selected to be honored as the twenty twenty-three Outstanding Working Woman to be recognized. However, this is a secret right now because we want to surprise her. We will be presenting this award later on this month to a very deserving woman. So please watch Facebook, watch the newspaper, because there will be information about this lady that has been selected. We do hope to pull off a surprise, so we'll see how that works and maybe her family will even be there to be able to appreciate it with her. We also would like to encourage you to honor the efforts of working women in your work environment and in your homes in some way during the month of November. So help celebrate November with us as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your copy. And I need to read this, I think, don't I? Do I need to read this? Okay, okay. So the Indiana Working Women's proclamation is, the month of November two thousand twenty-three has been designated as Indiana Working Women's Recognition Month to honor all working women whose accomplishments give fitting recognition to their services to this community. And whereas no event could be more deserving of the support and participation of the community than one dedicated to these women who represent all phases of employment. And whereas the inspiration and encouragement we give to develop qualities and character essential for more young women to enter the working force as a career is important to the future of our city, state, and nation. Therefore, we, the Town Council of Fortville, Indiana, do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty-three as Indiana Working Women's Recognition Month. In Fortville, we urge all citizens to be aware of this highly deserved observance. And in witness of whereof, I have set my hand and caused the great seal of the town of Fortville to be affixed on this sixth day of November twenty twenty-three. Thank you. Okay. Next item is Lee Carnish, Lee Wheezy Smoke Shack is asking for a special exception of the facilities rental agreement for the Community Center Kitchen for Saturday, December second, two thousand twenty-three, which is Winterfest.
How's it going?
Good.
My wife and I have a small barbecue business that we started up first of the year. We have applied for a booth at Winterfest. We'd like to bring out our smoker. The current lease agreement for the community center is, there's no that you can't rent just the kitchen by itself. There's a room that comes with the kitchen or basketball that comes with the kitchen. The shelter house is like three hundred dollars or two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars for the entire day. We actually are only about three or four hours to come in and be able to prep. We've got about a hundred and twenty of pork shoulder need to prep and get on the smoker, which will be firing about midnight because it'll be about a ten to twelve hour cook for all of the meat. I talked to Heath with the Parks Department and he's, we've kind of come up with a figure of about twenty dollars per hour to rent the facility. Like I said, it'd only be about three or four hours Friday evening, December first. Because like I said, the meat will have to be on the smoker by about midnight so that it'd be ready to serve when the event starts at noon. So we're just asking for that exception to be able to rent just the kitchen area.
There's not anything else going on over there, is there?
That would be a question for Heath.
See here? Hey, I see it. Is there anything else going on? Being in the park after that, do you?
No, he's currently one of our reserves in good standing. He works out at the school full time, paid by the school, and then has his smoker business on the, on the side there. So I fully trust that he's, will take care of the facilities and make sure they're clean and ready for the next day prior to him leaving.
Sounds good. So I guess we need to get a motion then to approve the exception at the twenty dollars an hour.
I'll make a motion to approve the rental of the Shelter House Kitchen, right? Shelter House?
No.
Community Center Kitchen.
Okay, okay. So his thing, it's just Shelter House.
Or the kitchen. It's both is on here, so.
Okay. For Lee to rent the Community Center Kitchen for Saturday, twelve to twenty-three for twenty dollars an hour.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So before we turn this over to Endot, which is our next item on here, I just want to state for the record that we understand and appreciate that the Broadway project, like all road projects and construction projects, have posed some challenges for everybody. And traffic patterns have been challenging. But I think the inconvenience will, will certainly far out, the benefits will outweigh the inconvenience of all of it, so. Not to say that there's not going to be more rough patches and the weather might cause problems, but I think that moving forward that things will go smoothly. At least I feel like they will. And I just want to say that we appreciate your hard work and commitment. Even though sometimes it doesn't seem that way, but we do appreciate it. And I'll leave it up to you guys to come up and introduce yourself and let everybody know, we'll just, instead of me introducing you, just say who you are and so everybody knows who you are.
Good evening. I'm Steve Linway, the Construction Project Manager for Endot and charge this project.
My name is Karen Abbott. I'm the Project Manager for Milestone Contractors of the project. So the first thing we're going to go over is kind of just a general timeline of where we are right now. So as of right now, starting Thursday, November ninth, we are going to start our traffic switch. RoadSafe, our subcontractor, is going to start that on Thursday. We do anticipate it taking about a day to a day and a half to do that switch. So once we do the switch, traffic will be allowed to go both east and west. On the new pavement surface, the old pavement surface will be closed. All southbound traffic, side roads will be open with the exception of Maple. Maple's not open due to waiting on some materials for a traffic light and to get all that area finished up. All the side roads on the north side will be closed at that time. Once we do our traffic switch, the first thing we're going to go ahead and do is start milling out pavement. That will help kind of get more of a level surface to allow access to businesses such as gardeners, that daycare property as well as some of the other ones. Right now, we have milled some temporary crossings to help them gain access to their business. As we've come more towards the end of the year, though, we're going to work on determining where all the utility locations are. We are going to start installing new water line once we come into the new year. So prior to that, we want to make sure that we're in good in clearance with all of the utilities and we know where everything is at. So once we do the water line, we'll then transition into the storm pipe. And then as we come into spring, we'll start working on our subgrade and then it will go into asphalt. Over the last couple of weeks, we have received some just general questions relating to the project. So we do wish to go over those today. So one of the main questions that we were, we've been getting asked is will traffic be open in both directions? And like I had said, starting Thursday, the ninth, once we do our traffic switch, we'll have two ten-foot lanes. Traffic will be able to go both east and west on sixty-four Broadways. Another question that we received is there was a question regarding the opening of Garden Street and Broadway Street. So that access there will be back open. The question was more related to, can you turn left there? As of right now, Garden Street will be open for both left and right-hand turns. Endot and I, or Milestone and Endot plan to kind of evaluate that intersection and make sure that traffic is flowing appropriately there. We received another question about phasing. So we do have provided the schedule here and we'll continue to provide an updated schedule as the construction goes. Another question that we received is the opening of Garden and Broadway Street that will be open once the traffic switch is done. We did receive a question regarding to traffic breaks along Broadway Street so that people can safely turn and get across the road. Right now, obviously, there are no cross streets open on the north side. But right now, the traffic light at Vitality Drive and State Route thirteen is going to be in place. Those traffic lights will hopefully provide a break, and that is something that Milestone and Endot's going to evaluate once the project goes. A question was asked about ADA crossings for the phases. Unfortunately, with the first phase, due to how with ADA path lengths, there was no way to provide a safe ADA crossing. Unfortunately, with ADA, we need to make sure that we have an appropriate path to put that is handicapped accessible. And with the current configuration that we were in with this phase, there was not any appropriate path. On the next phase, we do have an ADA crossing that will be installed pending constructibility that will be at Merle Street that will allow for pedestrians to cross US thirty-six. And then, I believe that's, we did receive a question about drainage along some parking lots. We have replied to that particular property owner, and if any more questions are asked about that, we'd be happy to meet on site. So those are all the questions that we've received at this point.
I do have a question. On the drainage to that property, I went down and looked at it. It's asphalt? Is that water going to go through the asphalt and drain out?
It's going to drain onto the ditch line and then come down where the approaches, the drains are installed.
Okay.
And we would be happy to meet on site if that would work better to kind of show you.
Okay, well, I went down and looked at it. I thought, I don't think the water's going to seep down through that asphalt.
Believe it or not, it does, but when you have a puddle, it'll run off to the lowest point possible. You do have a two and a half percent slope from the building out. Now, there are three locations in that parking lot where there's no drainage. It pawns. It just sits there. After the last round, we've got pictures. I can show you where that sits. I can't fix that.
It pawns there now?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a big patch that sits there.
Okay, and I asked about that, but we never got enough rain. I could go down and look at it.
We'd be happy to meet on site to discuss that one if that would help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And for the, just for the public, if anybody does have questions when the second phase is going on, that's what the email address is for. If you can get them to us the week before our first meeting of every month, and the guys will be able to answer those for you. And a lot of times, they'll just answer you back through the email and then they'll discuss it here too. But you have access to them at any time if you have questions. If something's, there's a problem and they're really good about, there's a whole group of guys here that get on there and answer them, so. They've been, so far, been really good to work with, so, yeah, I'll see. Thanks, Steve. And, and keep in mind too that the traffic lanes are small. They're only ten foot. Every, you know, everybody just needs to slow down, pay attention, look at the signage. You know, we want to try to discourage left-hand turns going westbound as much as we can onto those south streets other than at Garden Street. But you just be courteous if somebody's trying to make a left-hand turn, you know, let them go. That'll keep the traffic flowing. There's a lot of things that we can do to make this easier. So hopefully, everybody will try to be a courteous driver and let everybody get around without any too much stress, so. If anybody has any questions now, if you could, I think there's sheets back there on the table. Is there for the, the email address is sr sixty-sevenproject@fortvilleindiana, fortvilleindiana.org. That's the email address that you need to send your questions to.
And semis will still not be allowed to go through, right?
Surely will.
The sign will still be up, no semis.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can go through.
But they'll go through. We all know, we already know that. And they'll keep going through. Okay, thanks a lot, guys, for being here. Appreciate it. And they'll be here first Monday of the month, every month here until this project's over, right? Thanks again. We appreciate it. Yep. Sure, if you would. And if you, if you want to say, can you say who you are and let them know and?
Good evening. I'm Adele De Sold. I'm Director of Stakeholder Services for Endot East Central. So I work a lot with Steve Linway over here, who you just heard from. I'm going to leave some Endot contact cards in the back as well. These have the East Central socials on them. So if you are someone who uses Facebook or X, which was formerly Twitter, still getting used to that. We post a lot of project updates on our socials as well. We are trying to work closely with the town to share that information through the town socials as well. Like Tony on the council said, there is that's sr sixty-sevenproject@fortville email address, and that is where a lot of those questions came in that you've heard answered tonight. You're also welcome to go to the Endot for You customer service, whichever one, the State Road sixty-seven or the Endot for You that works. Endot for You, I actually have the customer service team under me. The women on my team are very responsive. You do get a actual person answering these questions. They go back to our project managers and our project engineers, area engineers. So I will leave these contact cards in the back. And feel free to look at those. There's also our GovDelivery service, which if you sign up for GovDelivery, you can get texts and emails about projects. So you can see like the press releases and things like that, so. I will leave these back there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Also, you can, another thing that you can get on our town website and subscribe to the text messages and you'll get instant, instant reporting like I get, like all of us get up here. So you'll get those text messages as well. And there's a place on the website that you can go to to sign up for that. Just want to try to make it so that everybody has a place to go if they got a problem. So this is the best way to do that. So there's a chain of communication and there's a lot of people with their hands on it. So I think, you know, you'll get your answers. Okay, next step. We need to consider adopting Resolution two thousand twenty-three nine A. A fiscal plan for voluntary annexation of two parcels owned by Garren Waters at the northwest corner of North two hundred West and North Fortville Pike.
I believe that'd be eleven A for resolution.
Should be, yeah.
It is.
First resolution is November.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. I got it. Sorry.
What's going to be, why, eleven A?
Eleven A, yep. Which is the second, is this the second time we've seen this?
So, this will be the first time on the fiscal plan. Adam ran through and he can tell you in more detail. This is just for voluntary. Well, for any annexation, you have to have a fiscal plan that describes what the fiscal impact is going to be of taking this property into the town. You know, will the town have to add police officers or fire? You know, what's it going to cost? And this was pretty straightforward, pretty limited voluntary, but the law still requires that before you have your second reading of the annexation ordinance, which is after this, you have to consider and adopt a fiscal plan. So that's why it's in front of you now and before you have your second reading on the actual annexation ordinance.
So we're looking for a motion then for the resolution.
Was the fiscal plan were approved, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the written fiscal plan establishing a policy for the provisions of services to the next area. Of nine five three four and nine five four four, North two hundred West.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass? Are you voting, Libby?
From mouth, aye.
I unmuted. I said yes. You just can't hear me.
We got you. Okay, then we need the the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three nine A, adopting the annexation ordinance for the Garren Waters properties.
This is the second reading of that one?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance annexing the territory into the town of Fortville and making it part of the town for the Waters annexation.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an approval on that. This is. Okay, there's no old business, so we'll move on to Joe.
Yeah, real quick, the water treatment plant, the old one is gone. It's been demolished and hauled away. There's a little bit of debris out there. Actually, the parks are quite a mess at the moment, but it's, it's getting better. They're cleaning it up pretty quick and getting things in order. The new aerator has been, or it's actually the old aerator has been refurbished and installed on the new plant. So it is up and functioning right now. So we're hoping to be able to flush hydrants if it doesn't get too cold because we need to start to, after having all that work done on there, and it's, I know it's really needed to get those hydrants flushed out and start to clearing some of those mains out. The parking lot up in town is scheduled to be resurfaced Saturday. And also, there's several places around town from our paving project, they've done some milling for their punch list, where they had to adjust some castings and everything. And hopefully, that'll all be done Saturday as well. The little project behind Scooter's Coffee, contractors are working pretty hard on that. I look for them to have that done this week. They've taken out the old road, hauling in dirt, getting it crated out to get some grass and straw on it and milled down and resurfaced the remainder of the road that's going to be there. So it's coming around. It should be there, should be done this week. Also, I heard before the meeting that Scooters is having a ribbon cutting Friday, eleven o'clock. So you're all invited to attend the ribbon cutting if you'd like to join. That is Veterans Day, I believe. And after Veterans Day, we plan to remove the Hometown Heroes banners from all the, the lamp posts. And we'll get those to where they belong. And we'll probably get started with the Christmas banners and the Christmas decorations at that point. Okay, and then the other thing that I've got for you, this was something that Missy was going to bring up. And he may pipe in if he needs to help me through this, but the council's agendas, or not their agendas, but the vouchers are prepared and sent out earlier. So you all have copies of the vouchers for this month or this pay period. There was one contract that came in from ZPL. This is something that we're going to use some of the stellar funding for, advertising for the Winterfest. This is the first Saturday in December. It's, goes on, on Main Street. It's our big event that we have every year. So we've got a contract here for three thousand dollars for a ZPL that did not make your voucher. So I would ask that you would approve this to be paid along with the rest of the vouchers you have this evening. I know times are the essence for that, so we didn't want to wait for another meeting.
And that's going to be reimbursed with a grant, a stellar grant.
My understanding, Les, Heath's got a different understanding of it. He's staring at me, so. Okay, okay. That's all I have unless you have something else for me.
Leaf pickup start this week?
Yes, they actually started picking up leaves today. Eleven o'clock.
Adam, you got anything for us?
Oh, I got a question for Joe. Sorry, the parking lot on the, when's it, when's it set to be done?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. And Dan, what's, what's going on with the stop signs? That somebody's bringing up that they're painted black. And I, I drove the backs of them.
Well, they've been like that for years. There, yeah, there's, there's no standard on that. Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual specifies the size of the sign, the reflectivity, the language on it, the height. It doesn't get into the color of the back of it.
Yeah, because I, I looked at it and it looked like they've always been painted black. It's still got the um barcode on the back of it. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll let them know that they've been like that for years. It's just. They've probably never gone down Stat Street at night because or uh penalty Broadway was open.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let them know. Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
Nothing for me in particular, unless you have any questions you'd like me to try to answer.
Is that house being tore down? I thought it's movement out there.
Well, um, the deadline to demolish the house on Noel, three oh three Noel is November seventeenth. Um, we were told originally by the property owner that it was going to come down today. Um, and there were some delays on her end. So. If it's not taken down by November seventeenth, um, as we've indicated to the. Uh, to the property owner, that fines will accrue on that item. And as far as we're concerned, the fines on their graffiti continue to accrue. Those have been accruing since October, so. Um, best case scenario is that uh majority of the structure be taken down as soon as possible. Lastly, she is looking to keep the garage um on the property, so we just want to make sure that. If she wants to do that, that, that side of the garage that'll now be visible from, from Noel is. Uh, reasonably attractive and it isn't glided, so we'll keep an eye on that too.
Thanks. Keith? Parks Department?
Luther Parks Manager, for the record, uh, don't have too much. Uh, first thing, the bridge is done in Memorial Park. Uh, steps were poured last week. Um, it is accessible now to and from. Uh, we do have a little bit of dirt work from um. Cement trucks and things like that that we're going to have to, to handle hopefully before. It gets too wet outside. Um, and we are looking at some rails, talking with Jerry, the building inspector. We're going to look at some rails to go on the side of that just because it's a little bit. You know, steep on both sides, but the bridge is usable and the steps are there. Um, the stellar grant that Joe is referring to, we have about twelve-ish thousand dollars left out of the tourism money. Uh, we've got a contract in place right now uh with Pickett and Associates and some other. Uh, third party people that they have hired, ZPL and everybody that they're aware of for Winter Fest. Um, and some other marketing as well, um, anything that we get to them as far as businesses on Main Street, that type of thing, anything that we want to put out. Um, we'll be able to have them put out on social media and things like that. Um, so that will be reimbursed if, if I can get the invoices in time. We don't even have to pay that. We'll get the funds from uh the tourism side uh prior and then we can just pay it. Uh, this ZPL thing came up fairly quick, so we paid it. We will get reimbursed for that. Um, and then the last thing that I had, hold on, sorry. Um, bathrooms are closed for the winter in the park. Uh, we closed them a couple of weeks earlier, what we normally do. We had some vandalism in the ones up at the shelter house. Um, and just decided instead of trying to repair all that right now, we're going to go ahead and close down the bathrooms. Um, so those are winterized and uh good to go for the winter. Um, obviously with the weather going on, we're working on mulching leaves and, and continuing to mow. But uh outside of that, everything's pretty good. Guys, got any questions for me?
Do we need to stall, install portal lets or anything out there for, for, close down the bathrooms or?
We always close down the bathrooms this time of year, yeah. Yep, especially with it getting dark now at five thirty. Um, yeah.
Are we um, are we okay with the? Stat Street being open during Winter Fest or what's? Because I can't remember what.
And I have made the adjustments after talking with Joe. Um, and uh the concerns from the police department and the fire department not having a way to access the north side of. The town off of sixty seven. Uh, we made a few adjustments and Stat Street will be open during Winter Fest. Um, we will have to have a couple of people stationed there only because. One of the things we do, the Santa Claus is typically in Ben Eads Insurance Agency. That road will be open to traffic. We're just going to have to be very aware of people crossing the street right there. But the, the roads will be open. We're going to keep everything south of Stat Street. So uh nothing is closed down on the east and west or out of stat.
Good.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, we'll do it when we do with the vouchers here. We can approve it. And Missy's not here. Alex, you got anything for us?
Did we skip Chief Bratton?
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick.
That's all right.
You want to speak?
Briefly, real briefly. Treats on Main went good. It was a good event. We handed out the. Gosh, I think almost four hundred pumpkins and a bunch of candy and then Halloween. It was cold, but there were still kiddos collecting candy, so that was good too. Um, the only thing I want to update you guys and the, in the public with is we are going to put a prescription drop box. Into the police department. We partnered with Neighborhoods Against Substance Abuse. They are funded it completely with grant money. Um, we're going to pay for it out of ours, but then they're going to reimburse. It's going to be mounted in the hallway in the police department hall there. Um, so anyone that has any old prescriptions laying around, they can get rid of them. And then NASA sends their uh people out to come pick those up, get them destroyed so they don't fill up our property room. So that will be coming probably first part of the year. Joe and I've kind of talked about where we're going to put it and how we'd like to. Put it and all that, so just wanted to keep the public and, and you all updated on that.
So you come in, you come in the building to get to it. You come in here.
It'll need to be during regular business hours yet. Um, we didn't want to put it in the main lobby area there. Um, so it's going to be in this, this side hallway. If you go in and dead end, it'll be to the right a little bit. And then uh there'll be a drop safe that's only accessible from the outside.
That's good.
And then NASA will be able to access from the inside to, to pick up anything they need.
Anybody have questions for Patrick? Okay, Alex, you got anything?
No, just sorry, the traffic gods uh were upset with me today. Four sixty five was a parking lot, but I don't have any less to have questions for me.
They're upset with everybody, I think. Okay, uh, public comment. We got any public comment? Anybody want to talk? What was that? Oh, well, isn't that a great thing? Hallelujah. Yeah. Well, the, the only one there, yeah, well, Walnut Street didn't have anything on it either, you know, that's how you access. Business district, but you know, we could certainly consider that. I mean. It needs to be at each end of town. Yeah, I'd say, yeah. No, we can, we can ask, we can ask N dot and Milestone to. Yeah. Yeah, can, can you come on, come, come on up? Because Libby can't hear anything you're saying.
Only way off the south side of town to the north side of town is either going to be thirteen. Or Garden Street. Are we going to do anything like about the road around to get to thirteen? Because it's like really full of chuckles and everything else. And with this winter, it's only going to get a lot worse. I mean, it's bad enough only having one road to cross.
All of the roads from the south will be open with the exception of Maple.
I understand that, but getting across, like I live on the south side. To get to work, I have to go up southeastern. So right now I come around through the neighborhood and go up Walnut and go across and go through the neighborhood and go up Main Street. I'm not going to be able to do that. I'm either going to have to go around to thirteen or go up Garden. Thirteen, go up to like Michigan and come across. Or Garden, go out, come around and go upstate to come back in to go across.
Two-way traffic though, so if you're coming from the south side, you can get on and go west.
Well, I realize that, but either way, I'm still going to have to go around.
Yep.
So, or I go, and I'm still going to have to come out one of these little neighborhood streets. Because. I live on Fortville Pike, so I'm still going to have to come through one of these neighborhood streets. The easiest way for me to do it, to be realistic, to not have to worry about the train twice and things, you know, is to come up thirteen. Which means I'm going to come, and I know this sounds like I'm just worried about myself, but I know other people that are going to do it too. We're going to have to come around that little side street there to get on to thirteen. That road is terrible.
Actually, that's probably not going to be your safest way to go. If you turn and go either Oak Street, Walnut, Poplar, any of those and get on Broadway, take a right and then go left on.
Am I going to be able to go left?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because either way, it's. And this isn't going, we're going to start tearing it up again in this November and it's not scheduled to be done until next November.
It's pretty close to accurate.
Yeah, okay. So what are we going to, and like you said, semis are still going to try to do this.
It'll still be open for semis.
Yeah.
Semis will be able to go.
Are the semis going to be able to make that turn though? With it open with the road only being that wide too. Because I know there's still a lot of semis that come down, even though it says no semis come down Fortville Pike. And then actually kind of get stuck in those neighborhoods.
We'll probably, when we'll, we'll get within that, but we'll probably leave the signs up, no truck traffic coming up Fortville Pike.
Okay.
Keeps those from coming up that direction.
Do we have any idea how long before Maple's going to be opened up?
Till they have a traffic signal in place, it won't happen.
Okay.
That's the only reason. I mean, it's, it's ready for traffic now, but it doesn't have a traffic signal there, so we can't do anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can, so does that traffic signal mean they're going to be able to make left turns off of Maple?
What's it?
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Counsel. Libby, you got something you want to say?
I got nothing.
Nothing?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
I don't have anything either.
Thank you. Nothing.
No comment.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve and sign vouchers and also include the invoice from WZPL.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers and also for the three thousand dollar contract ZPL.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty two, seven forty three PM.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Appreciate it.